...of the work session is so that we can go through each item on the agenda that would be on the city council agenda the following week, but to allow more time to get into questions, comments, a little more detail for everyone here to fully understand and to have the opportunity to discuss each of these items in real time as we do them. And so what we'll do here, just a reminder, we'll go through each item, old business, new business, we'll discuss amongst the council, get any presentation or speakers related to that agenda will speak, and then we can open it up for public comment. And then, so it means, Matt Aliway, if you have questions, feel free also to ask those questions as well at the time of that agenda item. I think first we have a presentation. Is that tonight, or is that next week? The Hundred Percent Clean Energy Presentation? Okay, that's my next, my next council meeting, council meeting. Okay. Okay, all right, very good. All right, so the Hundred Percent Clean Energy Presentation will be a council meeting, but there's the DVD for you, so you can, before seeing. All right, so we have three items under old business, which I believe that this defer, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
The G1, G2, and G3.
Right.
Okay. We're defer back to P and Z, is that right, Ms. Kelly?
No.
No.
To, yeah, you tabled it at the last work session, at the last meeting, so it came back to this work session to discuss and review the vote may say. P and Z made a decision.
Oh, okay, very good. So, I don't think we're doing a public hearing tonight, because that's, I'm sorry, um, I am, so, all right, so we'll talk about the considered applications to annex, which the area is, East Avenue, which are currently in our one, is that we're going to be returning. Can I ask, is there, is the applicant here? Okay. I believe that we've, I think several council members have asked for the applicant to provide some more permission, I mean, before, before the council meeting, has that, has that been provided?
I, I think I'm not sure, last time it was tabled.
So, thank you for your question about the Stormwater Impact Study, and then just the control of emergency emergency property and around, but I don't see anything.
Okay.
That's what he said, yeah.
Okay.
But he hasn't sent any studies back or any information about emergency management or impact that would happen to property, and the emergency people be able to get into, unless it gets to somebody else. Does it matter if he heard anything?
Let me go ahead and be tabled, we're wasting time, please.
I'm not tabled. We can't table it yet, this is work session.
Yes, but I think this, this, the annexation would have been fine if it was gonna, if the developer was gonna follow the same zoning, which is existing in the city. So it's becoming like, somebody coming to your house and asking you to live with you, and then the same day also asking you to change some rules in your house. So that just doesn't make sense. They wanna change the zoning from NR1 to NR3, and this is on the same application, it's basically just, if they were coming and saying, "We want to be part of Clarkston," they're always welcome, but they have to follow the same zoning ordinance, which is existing in Clarkston, in that area, which is NR1, which is low density. So I really feel like, and they say themselves they don't want to get annexed if they don't get what they're asking for. So it's just a catch 21, I guess, but I think we just should deny this annexation and rezone altogether.
Yeah, might as well, you know, I'm gonna say, so if anyone has any comment on, and we'll just combine, I mean, we don't need to go through annexation and rezone, because it's all, as, in fact, I think, I was trying to say is, they would like to do a certain developments, but it has to be rezoned, and so the items are attached. They do not want any annex, that they cannot do the density development they're asked before. So, we will take public comment, question, comments on just the annexation zones, has one topic here.
Any more, Richard Trail, that's what, before I have to give you this, what the council is doing is they're confining two or three issues or agenda items, so nobody gets confused, we're gonna be commenting on all three of those at the same time. It's a misunderstanding in our last meeting that was hurtful to some people here. But, yeah, I think that this thing's gone back and forth, you know, I was surprised that council brought it to table for another month. Nothing's changed every month, it's gonna be the same thing, it's been that way for a long time, and I encourage you to do your own research.
I'm late to game on this, but I just had a couple of questions about the process that it's taken.
Focus with your name of the director.
That's right, I'm sorry.
Focus with your name of the director.
Jan Riley. Has anyone contacted DeKalb County Trust about purchasing this property and helping Clarkston develop it?
Yeah, Commissioner Steve Bradshaw, who reached out to, I think several residents about using his park fund, funds, and he-
Has the city done this?
Yes, I have, I talked to him. And he said that he is not interested in this.
Okay. Can you tell me when that process, was it when the first group of townhomes came through, they tried to do that, or is it more recent, have we had very much? Has this happened more than once, has it been very aggressively pursued, is what I'm saying?
Pursued.
As in, helping Clarkston take a really prime piece of real estate, bring it into our city and develop it in a way that is beneficial for it? The reason I'm asking is that my question here is, DeKalb County has a trust that is specifically designed to do things like this. This is a great example of a really prime piece of real estate that is up for development, but our city is not set up to deal with it in a better way. And we could have a trust, or we could work more closely, so that when these kinds of things happen, we're not on the back end of saying no or yes, and being basically strong-armed by developers, for, from what I understand, basically saying, "You're gonna let us build this, or we're gonna do it anyway." Isn't that correct? They're gonna do it anyway with DeKalb County.
I mean, you'd have to-
Correct?
You'd have to check with the county.
Well, we know what their zoning is. We know what their zoning is, so we know what they're allowed to do there. I would like to encourage a formation of some better bridges and some more advanced connection between entities, both federal and state, that can help us, the city, make better choices in situations like this, because we're gonna come up with it more and more. And we have the choice here to make extraordinary places, or let other people build whatever they want. So I encourage you to think about this as a really positive option, it may or may not happen here, but it is a prime example of why we need to be more prepared and more interactive. And I personally, I'd be calling them every day, trying to get DeKalb County, or the state of Georgia, or the federal government to help us by it, just by it.
The county does have a land bank, and cities of Laphonia-
Speaker of Laphonia.
The cities of Clarkston are the two cities that own the DeKalb Land Bank. However, I do not know how much money they have available in that land, because we have worked with them in previous years.
If we had our own entity, we could facilitate not only just adding to the land bank, but we could facilitate having both governmental and civic forces coming up with designs that we know we can get approved, that fit our plan and our goals, so when opportunities like this come up, we're presenting builders with what we want, with a cost analysis on how they can make profit, and how it can affect the community, and instead of being reactive, we can be much more proactive. We are going to be developed, so I'm asking you, please, make this part of the goal, not just bringing up zoning afterwards, so we all feel rippled. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emma Corretta. Thank you. I am up here to state the same issues that I have stated previously, that this is spot zoning, it's not consistent with the houses that are presently there, developed as NR3, against the annexation, if it's going to be NR3, I think it should stay at the NR2. The other issues are the drainage into a major creek situation, we've not resolved that issue. Sewer stress, we had over 24 sewer leaks within the past two weeks in this county of DeKalb. I don't see that there's going to be any kind of resolution, from what I have been able to get from the county, any sewer lines and rehabilitation of the sewer lines behind Mylon Park, that above Belgrade, and also with DeKalb County land and this property, there's nothing scheduled that we've been able to find. The other issue is the HOA, we haven't gotten a version of the HOA yet, and what they're proposing. I don't believe that there's enough tree protection on the property and those properties that are adjacent, that we might be damaged by any construction and construction vehicles. The other issue I have is the acceptance of the $40,000 donation for affordable housing, but anybody who would be able to afford the $40,000, that might be able to get to assistance, are not having any accommodations in this development or the Glendale development, so we've missed two opportunities to provide affordable housing, and we're not asking the developer to do anything towards that, which we are saying everybody as a prime issue here in Clarkston. The other issue I find to be an issue is that we're not getting a completed plan. Here we are in work session, and we're supposed to be discussing a completed plan that the developer was supposed to have provided, but we don't have that. Not only does council not have it, we don't have it.
I told last week.
No, that's not a complete, that's not a completed plan, he's added to it. Yes, he has. According to what he stated, he added. So I'm just saying that we, as a public, should be able to have that, and I don't feel I need to argue on this part, since the plan's not complete. So I think it's a disservice to all of us that we don't have a completed plan. Thank you.
Hi, this is Louie, this is Papa Drive. I'd like to thank several of you guys for taking my emails and meetings over the past few weeks. Multiple emails for somebody, sorry. I'm probably gonna keep it short, but I do agree that the packet can be a little confusing. When reading through tonight's packet and looking at what microlife has presented, which feels very complete, I know there, I'm just a little confused over, is the rezone a PUD, and do we need a PUD checklist to go with the rezone? Because it seems like there's some pieces that maybe aren't there, like HOA covenants and tree save plans and tree surveys, and maybe I just don't quite understand, I've kind of made my psychic go through the ordinance, but there's a lot, and it's very hard to figure out, so that might be a little bit confusing.
Our expert.
Sure.
It could be confusing, but the trigger is the rezoning itself, that if you do a side-by-side checklist of what is required of the rezoning and actually the PUD, they are the same?
No, they're not.
Yeah, they are.
Well, okay, maybe I'll read an old one, because-
Let me, let me do my checklist for you, so I can go through each one of them, I did that before.
Okay, that's why I emailed you to ask, because maybe you could clarify the part in that period looked stupid. Sorry. No, I mean, I don't understand it, I'm trying to find out, I've asked many people.
So I think the part that may be a little, a tad bit confusing, that you read through it, is that, so, it's either on the rezoning application or in the requirements for the PUD, the plans will be, let me get it for you. Right, this is the report that you asked about. For applications, oh, add, groups of buildings on the same parcel of land may be reviewed or permitted as a single project, or as a planning and development, rather than individually. So he can either submit it as a rezoning request, as he has done, individually, or as a planning proposal. So that's why both of them have the same requirements when you actually go through the checklist.
Okay, so he's been, has he been alleviating from having to submit the tree survey? Because we haven't seen-
The tree replacement, the tree replacement land, or-
Tree protection. The rezone indicates that we have to look at ordinance article 12, which is a landscape and tree plan, however, a PUD application requires the actual tree protection plan.
Because 11 of the rezoning and the landscape, of the planning and development application asks for landscape plans, and then it goes to architectural designs.
Right.
So if you do side-by-side, the tree survey goes within the landscape plan, after review, and we do that with our-
Okay, where's the tree protection ordinance in the, in the rezone?
We have that separate, it goes into our landscape-
Okay.
-plan, so we do have that, that review is actually done.
Oh, well, do we get to see the tree survey and the tree protection?
Well, it's done during the permitting process, but we can do, we haven't done that yet, but we do, we can do a recompense, which is done with the landscape plan. So if that's a requirement that you ask for, we can submit that to public for review during the permitting process.
During the PUD, is there gonna be a public PUD, or no? No. Okay, so we don't get to talk about the PUD, and only get to talk about the rezone?
No, you can, yeah.
I'm just confused, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
Is that correct?
It's the same criteria.
But this is not a planning and development.
It's not, what is it?
It's exactly as the items are written, and approved to annex, and then approved to rezone.
Okay, so when-
That's what the items are-
So it's not a PUD, and there's not a PUD process?
There is a PUD, a PUD process, but this is period, and that's not this.
Okay.
But actually, what you're getting, because he's submitting actually more information, because during the rezoning, a conceptual site plan for a developer is not required.
Okay, well, obviously I'm confused, but I would like to strongly request that we see some things that are required of a PUD, which is an actual tree survey and tree save plan. I would like to see some greener development, and I would like to see some HOA covenant outline. Please, that's all, thank you.
Good job.
I'm passion hair, Papa Drive, thoroughly confused at the moment, but I think what maybe needs to be done is the rezoning request is being made based on the idea that this development is gonna happen. So, based on the desire for the development to happen, maybe. So the idea of maybe having more information upfront, to kind of feed your decision about whether to approve or deny the rezoning, would be helpful. It was very kind of yappy for us as citizens, understanding what the developer wanted, why they're asking for it, what actions were being taken by him, what the end result was gonna be. So it's just maybe a clarification.
Can you clarify for us what additional information you need?
So, I think it's things that we've reiterated, what the covenant's gonna look like, what they plan on, with that tree survey.
Just actually what he says.
He's provided that. He's provided, the applicant has provided the information that has been requested, however, there is a disagreement as to what the applicant has provided, whether that complies with our ordinances or not. That's where, that's where we are.
Because the initial, the initial submitted was for annexation and a rezoning request to develop cottage-style housing development. P and Z denied the rezoning, the rezoning was denied, the annexation was approved. We're here, based on the amendments, based on the conversations with the applicant thus far after planning and zoning till today.
Okay.
So the changes that you see are based on discussions that have made the developer come before city council, the previous work sessions, and city council meeting, and one-on-one meetings, or conversations, or public meetings.
Does everyone have this?
I have it.
You have it on top of your?
I may pass it to you.
Does everyone have it?
Do you speak at the microphone?
No one's speaking.
The developer actually submitted some updated conditions based on the last work session, and what was asked of him in the meetings, and he has submitted to us his updated version of those conditions, and based on the meetings that he has have, that he has had with the residents. So there have been one-on-one discussions, so the changes or amendments that you have are based on either your discussions or council's discussion.
So, what I would like to suggest is, this is a work session, so we're getting information out. Since the last meeting, while we're in work session at P and Z, there have been updated information and conditions. We're up to 20 conditions at this moment, and so I want to make sure everyone has a copy of this, does this have copies?
No.
If you see Shawnee has copies of the 20s of the conditions, and if you all have them, you can email to certainly. So we'd like to request anyone who still has questions, concerns about the zoning decisions, if there's things that do not make sense, that are not included, that you think should be included, make sure that you reach out to everyone up here, including SAP, if you have those questions or concerns, so that by next week, we have more clarity about, you know, what's happening and where there's gaps still in terms of whether it's sewers, tree save, tree save, HOA covenants. Maybe there's more.
Hello, I'm Laura Hopkins, I live on Papa Drive, can I share a thing with you?
Okay.
I, I'm gonna speak loud, since I'm not at the microphone, and this picture was just grabbed off the internet tonight from a blog called Love to Stranger, which is somebody in Clarkston, I don't know if you guys might know who does it. It is not my picture, and I'm probably doing copyright infringement here, but, but since she included my house, I don't really care.
She's just giving us a photo.
It's, it's just a photo of Poplar Street. Now, this, she put it up there because I think she thought it was like an idyllic little town street, and what you're looking at, I guess depends on your point of view, because some could say it's a small-town street, it's pretty street, redwood trees, dogwoods, some could say it's unnecessary, superfluous, setbacks, looking at a vacant lot, because that's also true. It depends on your perspective, but to us that live on this street, to all the houses included in this picture, this is a way of life, and if this development goes through, assuming, what, 88 or 65 more parks per day on this and east, this way of life will be gone. I mean, it will just be gone. Because people will not be able to walk and jog and take their dogs out and their kids out in the street as they do now. There are definitely much more traffic on this street, on foot and in strollers than there are in cars, and that will change. And I'm not sure what's going on, but I do know the fairness doctrine is legally dead, so I'm just gonna get up and speak for the other side anyway. Because the whole city zoning thing, and including this, is like Bill's Baby Guild, and the R Street thing, he openly states, "I'm a conservative Republican, I proudly work for the Heritage Foundation," and all of these.
I'm not talking about that.
I know, but it does tie in, because-
Excuse me, it's her comment.
Yeah.
It's my case.
It's her public comment.
The purpose of this is-
It's her comment.
This is down to my time, I have to finish the comment.
So you're getting off into a completely different tangent.
I'm not, because it's exactly the same thing, it's the idea of pulling out all stops on zoning. Now, what the right wing would have is no differentiation of zoning, like NR1, NR2, NR3, the same, all commercial is the same, but when I looked to the left, which go to academia, and found sustainablezoningcode.org, they're going the opposite way. In residential, these are legal professors recommending 12 different layers of residential before you even get into neighborhood commercial, so nobody is destroying anybody else's way of life. And we can't even consider that, because you folks have decided to go with the right wing.
Nothing I can understand it, you can't just say that we're talking about something we're talking about a regular world.
Okay, I'm sorry, because of the meetings people have had with many of you up there, the boxes stand to be stated, the voting box.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we noticed that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, for Bowland Street. I trust DeKalb County to rubber stamp in your question phones, because I pretty much don't trust DeKalb County to do the right thing ever, at this point in my life. But the answer seems kind of clear in front of me. Staff and P and Z both are quin days, annexation with NR1. It was research put into that, false put into that. People we trust represent us, yes, my wife is on P and Z, I'll know that anyway.
Thank you.
But the recommendations were made. The area in the back, where my bike's back, there's under times, maybe it's back in there. NR1, so that's what that is the area. NR2 would be a jump, NR3, that's not a transition, that's a jump off a cliff. So I think we should trust the recommendations of our staff, P and Z, for this recommendation, if it happens at all. As for having the county help us out, after seeing what happened at Briar Lake, with enough people, with enough pull, that condo or whatever developed shut down, we've got the county to buy one of the most expensive parcels in the park system to keep development out of Briar Lake, the county can't even push, he's gotta get the right person, I guess. So, I mean, I know you all reached out, but with what I can, I would prefer.
Susan Hood, by Del Brigh, I just want to say that this Clarkston could benefit from this development, but not in this location. We have the zoning ordinance, and it should adhere to, it also should not be changed, but that's another issue. This development, there is a place in Clarkston, there, quite a large area in Clarkston, that is already zoned in NR3, and the developer could develop this community there. So there's nothing preventing the developer from moving forward with this in the, excuse me, mayor, are you texting, or are you listening?
That would be awesome.
There are places in the city where this would be appropriate, and I think, as I say, this developer has a good idea, has a good plan, our city could definitely comment, but there's no compelling reason to rezon the property, particularly because the developer has said in writing that there is economic value, the property can be developed as currently zoned, and that is one of the requirements that goes into an evaluation of rezoning. So the developer has said that it can be developed- So, the developer has said that it can be developed at its current zoning, and it should be developed at its current zoning. Thank you.
Warren Hadlock, West Smith Street. Whether this guy gets what he wants in Clarkston or gets what he wants in DeKalb County is gonna be a rotten field for the city. It'd be terrible, terrible project, I don't wanna call it development. So, I'm all for turning him down. Builders are always gonna come to us, try to get everything they can, or else, we won't do it. We'll go to the county, whatever threat they wanna use. It's a bad idea. If he can't get it from us, he goes to the county, fight at the county level, but it's a bad idea. It looks horrible. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to items, new business, H1, discussing applicants who proposed planned cottage home development. This is an eight page, it's on 2572, so we'll have a discussion on this, and we'll have a public hearing on this, the council, but we'll recognize Michael, this is MicroLife Institute. She wouldn't mind presenting her presidential on this development.